Let's meet and come to order, July 23, 2019. Public hearing, roll call please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wales. Councilman DiViterio.
Here.
Councilman Leon.
Here.
Public hearing, none, so we'll move into our regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wales. Councilman DiViterio.
Here.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
I ask for you to stand for our prayer, and I ask Councilman Andrews to lead us in prayer.
Most gracious, love you Father, we come to you right now in humble way. Thank you, Father God, for this is the day that you've made. We rejoice and we're glad about it. Thanking you for your darling son, who died upon the cross so we too would have access to the tree of life. Father God, if there's ever a time we need you, we need you right now. You actually continue to guide us, continue to keep us right now, continue to bless us. Father God, continue to bless our police department, our fire department, our administration, continue to bless the council right now, Father God, as we set our hearts in place to lead this city. And we just thank you that everything will be done decent, order, and pleasingly in your sight, where you would give glory, honor, and praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
For the pledge of allegiance, I ask all veteran and active military to render the proper salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reports, do you have any council reports?
I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you, and one that came out Saturday to support us in our District One family day. We had a nice gathering, everything went great, way better than what I expected, so I'm really excited about it. And I want to thank my judges for coming out and, you know, eating that barbecue, that chicken, and everybody in the district, we want to thank you. But my team also wants to thank Chuck for his donation that he gave to us, so we sit here. I understand that, Chuck, but I live off the principle of the Bible, say you give honor by honor to do, so we thank you for your donations. So your team decided to send that out to you, I told you you'd be here tonight.
Good man, Chuck.
Thank you.
Thank you. It was a great event, we had a good time, and I know my son had fun running around in MLK Park. Any other council reports? All right, Mayor?
Don't forget, this Friday, we have the Back to Backpack Program for children at Hammond Westside. Please, if you know anyone, any children going back to school, let them know you may have a parent present with you or a guardian. Starts at nine o'clock, ends at one. We thank Grace Gasaway, who had this program many years ago, and when I came back, when I was in office, asked her she would come back and start it again with me. Through her efforts and our efforts and Team Hammond, this is going to be a great event, along with other services provided by the school system. And it's going to be a great day, so please come out.
Thank you. Are there any new businesses in the audience that like to be recognized? All right, now for the minutes of July 9, 2019. Need a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we accept and approve our minutes from our land meeting on July 9.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wales. Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
We'll move into old business. Number one, a resolution to approve Friday, November 1, 2019, All Saints Day, and Monday, February 18, 2020, President's Day for municipal fire and police civil service employees for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. Ms. Loretta.
Good evening.
How are you? Doing well.
Well, we're back. This week, Councilman Ventor- the Ventoria.
Yeah.
Requested estimations on the cost for fire and police, and I believe you got those numbers?
I haven't got, I didn't get anything.
Yes, the email was sent out to all the council members.
When was that?
Last week.
Last week, okay.
I think it was maybe Wednesday or Tuesday even last week.
Okay.
The number's somewhere between $10,500 and $11,000 per holiday.
Ten to eleven thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Extra?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right.
And the departments will absorb that in their budgets.
Okay.
And as I mentioned, we're just trying to be consistent with the city court or in Tanjapohu Parish government.
So they all have 16 days, and that's where it started from?
The parish has, the parish does not have All Saints Day, but they do have President's Day. City court, which is right next to it, they do have 16 holidays.
Okay, so one has 15, one has 16.
Yes.
And we had 14?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
My second motion.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Thank you.
Councilman, we're voting on item number one, and if you're not prepared, that we can show your passing.
Aye.
Aye.
Number two, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Louisiana Children's Discovery Center for 110,000 from July 1, 2019, to June 30, 2020. Lacey Langford.
You have the revised contract, so if there's any discussion about it, I'll be happy to answer questions.
Thank you for putting in a schedule, I appreciate you. That's definitely what the council decided, or the majority of the council decided we wanted. I know I spoke with Ms. Patty about it, and everybody seemed on board on their side, so, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the council or the public?
I'll make a motion that we approve.
My second motion.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
New business, number one, a resolution to approve Streetside Market located at 201 West Thomas Suite B, Hammond, Louisiana 70403, to obtain a permit to sell high-low alcohol and possess high-low alcohol on premises, owned by Downtown Market LLC. Jenny Wilson.
Good afternoon. This is a new business that's going to be located on Thomas Street. And downside, Streetside Market, when I think about a market, I think about, you know, fruits and vegetables and things of that nature. But there, but what I understand, it's going to be several different restaurants located inside that building as well. And that's why they're wanting to not only have packaged liquor, but liquor on premises. They have met all the qualifications, and all of the inspections are up to par, so everything's been done that I've asked them to do. And we're asking for your approval tonight, and I have a representative here, you might have some other questions about exactly how it all lays out, if you can come up.
Just your name and address for the record, please.
Glenn Alak, 17420, Highway 190, Hammond.
Questions or comments from the council?
Give us a real quick overview, Glenn.
It's a, it's a blended concept. There's going to be a market inside where you can go buy packaged goods, prepackaged food, your necessities for anybody living downtown as far as milk, orange juice, bread, but there is also is going to be several different restaurants. Treyanne's going to be in there, there's going to be a pokey, there's going to be a lit pizza concept, there's going to be homemade pasta, there's Morning Call is going to be in there, doing coffee and beignets, there's going to be a seafood restaurant inside, so it's a big variety of it.
When did y'all expect the anticipated opening?
Right now, we're shooting just to open the doors August 6.
Very good.
But finally, really push it, be by hot August nights.
Very good.
Great.
Heard many people say they want a market downtown, so that's a good service that you're providing.
Yes, we got that feedback a lot when we started it, so that's why we decided, when you go in, probably the first half on the right side is a market.
Very good. Are you still hiring?
Yes, we are still hiring right now. We've been hiring for the last week and a half, and we still take applications.
Very good.
There's a lot of different positions in there, so, from dishwashers to cashiers to everything else.
Exciting.
Very good, very good.
Any other questions, comments, anyone from the public?
Thank you for your input.
Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, Glenn, and good luck.
Thank you.
Number two, a resolution supporting the submission of an Apache Foundation Tree Grant Program application for 100 native trees for the city's annual Louisiana Arbor Day Tree Giveaway. Charles Porchers.
Hello, this is a grant that we tend to apply for every year for our annual tree giveaway. In the past, we tended to apply for anywhere from 65 to 75 trees. It's been a fairly successful event, so this year we're targeting 100 trees. They're free from the Apache Corporation, there's no match requirement. Arbor Day in 2020 is the third, it's always the third Friday of the month of January, so that's January 17th, so, if you have any questions.
I have two of these trees in my yard that we got over previous years, so, it's a nice program. Any questions or comments from the public or the council? Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three, a resolution to sup- in support of the 2020 census. Kiana Wiggins. Come on up.
Hello.
Hi.
I don't know if I can.
Do you need to trade that out?
Yeah, it's fine. Could I just?
Yeah.
Which one do I? Is this one?
Just Marcus, if you need him, we'll get him.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah.
So, good afternoon, my name is Kiana Wiggins, and I am partnership specialist with the United States Census Bureau, thank you so much for having me. Louisiana is a part of the Atlanta Regional Census Center, and so the other states is Mississippi, Alabama, North and South Carolina, Florida, and Georgia. Louisiana was in the Dallas Regional Census Center, but we felt that in 2010, and then after the 2010 numbers came out, it didn't do so well, so Louisiana should be better aligned with the Atlanta Regional Census Center. The census is important because that's how we determine money and power. The first census was, occurred in the United States in 1790, and so, trying to fix, in 1790, so in 1790, the United States counted 3.9 inhabitants. Notice I said inhabitants. You do not need to be a citizen of the United States to be counted in the census. That is not a requirement. The purpose of the census, the decennial census, so that's what happens every 10 years, the purpose of the decennial census is to, to count all of the inhabitants of the United States, because that's how we determine power, which is the reapportionment of Congress, and redistricting, and money. That's how we decide the budget, right? So, no, that's how we disseminate the budget dollars to Louisiana. So, what do I mean reapportionment? There are 435 members in the House of Representatives, the census is a snapshot, so when we have the 435, that's a snapshot of the population who goes to Congress, right? So, quick civics lesson, we have the Senate and the House of Representatives, the Senate is the upper chamber, every state has two senators to make it fair, the House of Representatives, it's based on population. That population is determined by the census. So, what does that mean for Louisiana? How many people do we have in the House of Representatives? Anybody know? Six. We don't have that much power, right? Who's the most powerful? It would be California, because they have 53. Next would be Texas, then Florida, then New York. Obviously, it's based upon population, they're bigger states, let's keep that in mind, and they have denser population count. But Louisiana lost a seat after the 2010 census, and we don't want that to happen again. We had seven, and then districts, congressional districts, three and seven, had to battle it out for, to see who won. So it was like a battle royal, right? No, it wasn't. But we don't want that to happen, right? We want Louisiana to have their full fair share. So I'm a Louisiana resident, I grew up in Jefferson Parish, I graduated from Dillard University almost 20 years ago, I know I look good. And then I graduated from Tulane with my masters soon after. So, I'm a local girl, I never left. I convinced my husband to stay, he is from Suffolk, Virginia, why did he come here? Because he worked for NASA, and so he was recruited out of Virginia Tech to be a rocket scientist and help build Orion. And so, I said, "Look babe, we gonna stay here forever." Right? So, I love Louisiana, I want Louisiana to thrive, and that's what the point of the census is, because that's how, he took my presentation, and that's how we, we determine, we determine our political and monetary power. So what's the goal of the census? Our goal is to count everyone once, and only once, and in the right place. So, what does that mean? We want to just count you in your home and be truthful. So if you're a child, you have children of divorce, they should be counted in the house they spend the most time with, if they have split home, and it becomes really, "I have them six months, you have them six months," count them in the house when the census information comes, right? If you have children in college and they live on campus, any campus people, they get counted at the campus. That benefits Hammond. Why? Go Lions, right? Although I hate y'all because y'all always beat us in baseball at Tulane, right? But, no, I don't really, but go Lions. All of those students at SLU are counted, who live on the dorm, are counted. All of those off-campus apartments, you want those students to be counted here, because why? They live here nine months out of the year, right? They are taxing your district the most, so you're counted in the most. They're counted where they are spending their time the most. The same with the, with the, we getting it together, the same, the same with people in nursing homes, they're counted where they are, that's called group housing. With hospitals, they're counted where they are, that's called group housing. So, why do we care? Because that's how we get federal dollars. Census data is used all the time to determine your federal dollar worth, and we want to make sure that when Louisiana is getting their federal dollars, and by the way, that's $675 billion a year, that's split up through the states, every Louisiana resident is worth about $2,300, so we want to make sure we are almost there. We want to make sure that, that Louisiana gets their fair share. So, let's wait, have backup, right? For sure. He's going to switch the source. In the meantime, I will tell you this, we are hiring, and so in Tanjapohu Parish, and Hammond is one of the last cities to adopt a resolution, so we want to say kudos to Tanjapohu Parish. Tanjapohu Parish has been on it from day one, they adopted, the parish-wide adopted a resolution for the census on May 28th, so they've been rolling ever since to make sure. And so, in addition to you guys, we, Ponchatoula has adopted, Independence will adopt, Amit has adopted, and I will speak to Kentwood in September, so they can adopt the resolution. So, I kind of verbally told you guys all this, and in the sake of time, I'm going to speed through. Do you mind? Okay. So, that's the map, Louisiana, we only have six, right? California has 53. We want to make sure Louisiana maintains or gains privacy. We do not sell your information. I swore an oath to the U.S. Constitution that I'll keep your information until I die. And so that's how important this is. Under Title 13, we don't share any of your information. If you are, if you said you were renting an apartment or a house, and you said only two of you were living there, I'm just trying to lie, and I get it, but eight of you guys live there, we want you to be honest and tell us that, eight, because then that affects how housing assistance dollars can help Hammond, because then we can see clearly there's a housing issue, or people need help, or there's borderline homelessness, when you have that many people in the house, that's what it's called. And so we want to be able to help that. We won't tell your landlord, don't be afraid of that. We don't tell ICE if you are here illegally, we don't tell the DEA, we don't tell the sheriff's office if he's looking for you because you have a traffic warrant. We don't tell that, he has to do his own job, right? So, we keep your privacy. We never ask for your social security number, the census does not care about that. We never ask for money or donation, no political party, we are nonpartisan, so we adhere to no one but the U.S. Constitution, which is a living, breathing document for our democracy, right? So we don't ask for PIN codes. Anybody walking around saying they work for the census, asks for these things, call the police. And remember, I told you the goal is to count us once and only once, and in the right place. What's new about the census? The census is online. So, you'll get a card in the mail, and it'll say, it's a password and a website, and we want you to go there, because it's electronic. If you don't have access, there's a phone number you can call, an numerator can take your information over the phone, or you can request a paper, a paper census form, and they'll mail it out to you. So we're trying to eliminate that. Before I get to that, I do want to say, if you don't answer the census, so April 1st is in the Constitution, but it is unlikely that we could be able to count everybody in the United States on April 1st, right? We can't do that. 3.9 million people back in 1790 was quite easy, we don't do that anymore, so we really start in March. So the census will start March 12th, so March 12th through the 20th, that's when you'll get the card in the mail. And so dates will continue to go on until April 27th is the last day you can take the census. So we, once that date hits, that's it, that's the count Louisiana has, that's what Hammond's going to have, that's what Tanjapohu is going to have. But we want to make sure that we count everyone. How can we do that? By asking you guys to approve a resolution saying you agreed to be a complete count committee, and all you're saying is we publicly support the census, and at any event that we think census material will be beneficially handed out to the people, we'll do that. And I'll supply you with all of those materials. And that's basically what this slide is saying, I'll help you out. One example of an organization helping us is the Causeway Commission. So Carlton is going to flash signs on the causeway that says, "Take the census, our census is coming." I know, he's working really hard to come up with something witty, right? So those are going to start in February, and it'll go from February until April 27th to really remind people, that's a simple act of how to encourage people to take the census. The goal is to campaign, we're campaigning to the census, because we really want to make sure that people take the census. So, we are hiring, the pay rate is $15 an hour. Please do not quit your regular full-time job to work for the census, it is a temporary job. So if you have benefits or sustainable employment that is constant, don't quit your job, but we are flexible with hours, so you can work morning or evening, and it's $15 an hour. You must be a citizen or have proper working identification to work for the federal government. But you do not need to be a citizen to take the census, and you got to be 18. So, please spread the word out, I have flyers over there, if you want to apply for a job, and, and if the city of Hammond would be so kind when we hire all those people, y'all could provide us with free, we need free training space, not so much testing, because we're trying to go really, really fast, so we're just going to train them really fast, and we're going to vet them before we get to the training part. And the next step is you guys passing the resolution for me, that would be awesome, and then, that's it.
Very good.
So I will leave you with this, I do have some numbers for you, how dismal Louisiana is, it's not a positive number. So, our goal is to hire 35,000 people, about 35,000 people in the state of Louisiana. We have only hired 10,000. That's less than 28% of our goal. And in Tanjapohu Parish, our goal is to hire 1,150 people, we have only hired 351, because we are not getting people to apply. So we have 799 jobs remaining. So I really want to encourage you to take flyers and, and tell people, please don't quit your real job, but please come and work for us, it's $15 an hour, minimum wage in Louisiana is $7.50. So we put a premium on it because we can't get people to work. So, with that said, do you have any questions?
Kiana, would you tell me, tell everyone what you told me about people not counting their children?
Yes, so, I, that is a serious problem.
Just because I don't think people are aware of that.
Children should be counted all the time, so when I was growing up, the saying was, children should be seen and not heard, and I think they took that to heart with the census. So, we want to make sure that we count, I just can't, we want to make sure, we want to count our children. So children are not counted, about 1 million children under five in the United States, and that's just the people we know who took the census. These are the people who took the census, we know they did not count their children. And we need to count them, because what happens is, it's 10 years, right? So if you have Headstarts or school nutrition, I always use the example, I graduated from John Eric Senior High School, John Eric was only built for 1,500 people, when I was at John Eric, 2,500 of us was there. Guess what we ate for lunch every day, whether it was free or you paid for it, I paid for lunch. Pizza and hamburger. You know why? Because they needed money to feed every student, and that's the cheapest thing you can buy. So it affects school nutrition. If you only have 500 budgeted slots for Headstart, but 1,500 children show up, then they kind of get that $500 worth education, and we don't want to do that. They are moving through the system, so a one-year-old today will be 11 in 2020, and they'll live all that time not being counted, and it's that detrimental. So it affects the LaChit program, it affects SNAP, it affects anything that has to do with children, it affects foster parents. Foster parents, please count your foster children, they are living with you, you should count them. Remember, we want to be counted once and only once, and in the right place. And, we just want you to get organized right now, and I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any questions for Kiana, from the public or the council? So we have before us a resolution to, you all received it, so hopefully you've looked at it, in support of the census, and also to create a 2020 census complete count committee consisting of six members. We decided the easiest way to, to fill those spots is each council member can nominate one person, and the mayor can nominate one person to be in charge of this complete count committee. Questions on that? And that committee's job is to promote the census. Pleasure to the council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Thank you. Number four, a resolution to approve change order number one for canal improvements fiscal year 2019, adding $30,770.26 for pedestrian bridge extension, project, project number. Chuck?
Good evening. This should have this hyperlinked, this is what the change order looks at, it looks like I'll give you a, a quick overview. We have a project in, under contract by the name of Canal Improvements fiscal year 2019, that's the work on the Hazel Street Canal, and the work on the J.W. Davis Pedestrian Bridge. In May, we had a six-inch rain over a two-day period, you may or not remember it. That particular north abutment sunk about two feet after we'd got about 30% of the work done, and the high water went over the top of the abutment, and when the high water went down, it took the, all the embankment on that end of the J.W. Davis Bridge with it, sunk about two feet. So we approached NRCS for some grant funds, because we had gotten it previously for some work on the Hazel Street Canal in Devon's District over there, about Third Street, between Third Street and Second Street, I guess, yes. And we rebuilt that with a bulkhead, but, but we were told, it took us about a month and a half, but we were then told by NRCS that the flooding in Missouri, and in Arkansas, and Oklahoma, and Iowa had depleted their funds for this fiscal year, and they could not help us. So we went back to the contractor, we contacted the original contractor that built that pedestrian bridge, because I don't, do not believe and recommend to the mayor, actually Jay Pittman wrote a letter, recommending we do not go back and build that abutment up, because I'm afraid to get another high water, and you get that silting material saturated, it'll disappear again, it'll basically cause further failure. So we've added two spans to that existing bridge, it's a seven span, it will now be a nine span. I thought the price would be around $120,000, and the extra, extra cost is actually around $30,000, because we deducted some of the abutment work that we were going to do out of the project. Obviously, we're not going to work on that embankment, I said abutment, I meant embankment. So the net result is it is $30,000 extra, the, that's the bad news, the good news is it's way out of the flood area now, it's 60 feet away from where the sinking took place, where the, where the abutment sloped off, embankment sloughed off. There were some other extras included in this change order, that included some work on the east bank of Hazel, Tiffany Viall's office is right there. Tiffany Viall's office is right there. And when we did the, the work, she wanted a fence put up because they were worried that somebody'd fall in. It used to be all grown up and we had to take a lot of the growth out. So we put up a fence and we did a little bit of work on her side that was not in the original contract. We had a little bit more sod on the Skarl's side because they tracked back and forth over all that building and we're siding all Ms. Skarl's. It's actually partially her property and partially Riteaway. Uh, so we did a few, a few other extra things, but primarily the extra cost is the expansion of the pedestrian bridge. So I have pictures, I think I attached those to the, uh, if you want them, what we're planning on doing, itemized it. Pictures look kinda like this. It should be attached to your.
We didn't get pictures?
I sent it with the change order. I emailed it with the change order. It was attached to the change order, is it a PDF? If you don't want them, you don't want them?
Two low ones and two big ones. Well, eight and a half miles and then these are full size.
I got it. Yeah, I got it.
This is actually what was presented to NRCS when they came and did their damage assessment. They did concur that the nature of the cause of the damage was the high water infiltrating the, uh, base of the material. They just don't have any money to help us. And thankfully, we don't need $120,000. We need 30. Anybody have any questions?
And where does the 30 come from?
Uh, this was, project was under budget, so we have that in that project fund. There is a considerable amount of money left in that project fund. So it's in that exact same project number, 42011910. Normally that would transfer to the next drainage project if we needed it. So it will be, there's no change in it. No, no projects being cut in order to fund this.
Again, I got a question.
Sure.
This is in District 3, right?
Um, yeah. I believe, yes, sir.
Yeah. Uh, I came over to the office and I talked to you guys that worked out. And what I asked, I asked a question of how many more feet being added to the bridge?
60.
60?
Actually, it's 50, it's, it's 60 feet, it's about 56 feet, 56 feet.
Okay.
It's two, it's two spans, but we're backing up one span to set new pilings and missing the abutments or likes of tracking four from 60 feet, so that's 56 feet.
Okay.
That should be on that drawing.
Okay, what I did, I did have engineer to come over there Sunday and look at it. And he was telling me the bridge should have been that size in the beginning when they first did it. And so what I would like to do, I would like, I would like to tell you what for right now, if I can get some more information about the pedestrian bridge. Because what it is, I don't want to sit here and keep spending money, well, keep putting a Band-Aid on something, they're gonna break again.
I hear you.
So that's what I would like to do.
Motion to table?
Yeah. Like to make a motion to table.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved to table.
Number five, a resolution to authorize the mayor to sign the G-Suite ordering document, ordering document to purchase the G-Suite business products for the city of Hammond. The contract allows for the city's Microsoft email to be migrated to Google Mail with a first free, I'm sorry, a free first year of service and with a cost of $37,800 for each year following Marcus.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
It was all pretty much listed here. Um, if you guys have any questions, I'm here to answer. Uh, currently, we actually, uh, on our own hosted, uh, exchange server right now. We host it here. Uh, the purpose of going to Google G-Suite, it gives us extra, um, softwares that'll be use, that are usable throughout the city. Also, it gives us the opportunity to join with, uh, the parish, sheriff's office, Southeastern, um, all our neighboring agencies in government that are also on it and during times of storms and things like that, to be able to share Google Docs, Maps, all these different things. So it kinda unifies the parish to be able to work in one environment, but still be separate and be your own environment.
And then it assists us with our disaster recovery plan?
Yes, it will also be a part of our disaster recovery plan due to the amount of storage that they're gonna allot us for what we, what we're getting. Um, also, if we have to relocate, um, as I said before at earlier time, looking to make things more of a mobile city. So if we did have to pick up and relocate somewhere else, we can operate fully from that location. And this will give us that opportunity because the servers will not be hosted here in the city of Hammond. They'll be hosted, I mean, they'll be housed somewhere else. So that'll give us the opportunity unless it's bigger than the city of Hammond. You get where I'm going with that?
Questions? Comments from the public? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number six, a resolution authorized the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Louisiana Department of Veteran Affairs for $1,872 from July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2020. Lacey?
There were two questions bottom up about this contract. One was why is the contract presented this, this meeting instead of last meeting? Uh, the Department of Veterans Affairs provides us this contract and likes to use their standardized contracts. We were waiting for this contract. Once we received it, we forwarded it on to the council and approved it for this meeting. Um, second, there was a question about why the odd amount. Uh, this again is Department of Veterans Affairs, um, does a percentage. And you can see on the very last page of the contract is the breakdown for Tangipohua Parish as a whole. We contribute 8% of the parish contribution. Um, and we also provide in addition to these funds which are allocated in the budget, uh, we, we actually allocated 2,000 not knowing exactly where the contract was gonna come in. So we are within budget. Uh, we also provide an office to them that is over at the United Way Social Services Building on Coleman. And we provide telephone and internet services which are already included in our telephone for the, the city as a whole. So these are all services that we have done and continued maintained for several years, um, throughout.
Questions or comments from the council? From the public?
Yeah, I got a question.
Sure.
Yeah. It's Lacey, now that you say that, where is the building located at?
I'm sorry? The building?
Yes, ma'am.
Over there on Coleman Avenue, where the United Way, that yellow building that's right there, fronts Coleman.
You know what? Yeah, they've been calling, uh, complaining about it, it need to be pressure washed. The building need to be cleaned. Okay. Cause they've been getting on it.
Robert Northern last week. George Anthony gave me a call.
All right, thank you. That's another question.
Pleasure of the council.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number seven, a resolution to accept the engineering and economic feasibility report for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. Webb Anderson.
Yes, good evening. As y'all are aware, the city is under compliance order through, from DEQ and these are the improvements that the city committed two years ago to, uh, to do to improve the facility. And, uh, I think this is just another step in the process of receiving the funding.
This is the report that is required, uh, by the city's charter to be published, um, at least 60 days in advance of an election. Um, we are, uh, the, the next item on here is a resolution to call for an election to be able to move forward with the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund program.
Questions for the council? From the public?
Question?
Yes.
Is that, uh, if there's something on the website informing the community about this improvement?
Yes, that, that's actually what the council is accepting. Um, linked up to here, it's called an engineering and economic feasibility report. It describes the project in detail. Um, but if you just want the Cliff Notes version of that, they're basically, uh, creating a new lagoon out at the current sewer treatment plant, um, that will increase our capacity to 8 million gallons, um, and will also increase detention time and will bring us into full compliance.
One other question. The, uh, I see you making a proposal for the resolution, um, for a special meeting and get that mighty setting that bonus to accommodate the improvements of the sewer water treatment plant.
That's correct. Yeah, the, what the election that we're calling for in the next resolution, and Mr. Wolf is here to also explain a lot of those, um, elements. The overall project is 2.1 million dollars, um, for this expansion and improvements at the plant. And the election would be an election of the people according to our charter, um, to approve us being able to take that out as a loan. Uh, the loan is part of the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund, um, and it's at 0.95% interest, which is an exceptionally amazing interest, um, less than 1%. And it's a 20-year, uh, period for that loan.
Can you get your name for the record?
Terrence Lee, Pastor Terrence Lee, Second Road, South Patrick. I have one other question regarding that. Uh, the other question would be, uh, basically, um, when you, when you set the charter in place, I heard you said something about making the charter public, to amend the charter for this particular grant, did that what I'm understanding?
No, sir. We are not amending the charter. The election would just be to call for us the ability to take out this loan. So it's not to amend the charter at all and it's only for this specific project to take out the loan for this specific project.
Any other questions from the public? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number eight, a resolution ordering and calling a special election to be held in the city of Hammond, state of Louisiana to authorize the incurring of debt and issuance of not exceeding 2.1 million dollars of sewer revenue bonds, making application to the State Bond Commission in connection therewith and providing for other matters in connection therewith. David Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm David Wolf with Adams and Reese Law Firm in New Orleans. And I, I've been working with the administration for a while on this, uh, proposed loan from the DEQ Revolving Loan Fund. Uh, this Clean Water Revolving Fund, which is operated out of DEQ, is actually my client. And I, uh, work with them and handle loan applications from cities and other systems like yours. But I've been working with Hammond on, um, organizing the, um, authorizations that are necessary for the city to borrow 2.1 million dollars from this fund. Um, as Lacey said, the fund makes loans to local governments for 20 years for improvements to sewer systems and the current rate is 0.95%. This is a federal program that's administered by, uh, DEQ here in Louisiana. There's a similar fund for drinking water improvements that operates out of the Department of Health. Uh, you all, you all have, um, been looking at a project that's gonna cost about 2.1 million dollars to finance. Uh, the normal way of paying for that would be to borrow money either through a bank or an underwriter or a lender like the Revolving Loan Fund. Your charter calls for an election anytime the city issues bonded debt and requires that an engineering report be submitted to the council at the time that the election's called and published at least 60 days before the election. Um, in Louisiana, the Secretary of State's office sets the, uh, I'm sorry, the legislature sets four election dates each year, uh, on which local governments like, like Hammond can hold elections. Secretary of State's office, of course, runs the election process. This resolution would set the wheels in motion to put a proposition on the ballot on November 16th of this year. Uh, that'll be the gubernatorial runoff election date. And I think you all have a copy of the, um, election call there. At the bottom of the first page is the wording of the proposition that'll appear, um, at the election. And it asks the voters to give the city permission to borrow up to 2.1 million dollars, uh, to pay for improvements to the sewer system. These would mature over a period of not exceeding 22 years, and I'll explain that in a minute, um, at a rate of not more than 1% to be payable from revenues of the sewer system. Uh, as Lacey said, this is not requesting an amendment to the charter. This is just being called as required by the charter. And if this passes, you would be able to then issue in the name of the city up to 2.1 million dollars of sewer revenue bonds. The DEQ program, um, uh, the guidelines allow you to, uh, borrow the money and for two years of construction to pay interest only. And then when the project is complete, amortize the principal over a period of 20 years. So that's where the total 22-year term comes from. If the construction period is less than two years, the bonds may be liquidated in 20 or 21 years. So 22 years is the outside term. Um, if you approve this resolution tonight, then the next steps are to apply to the State Bond Commission for approval at their September meeting, file a certified copy of this resolution with the Secretary of State before their deadline, which I think is September 23rd. It also has to go to the clerk of court, the registrar of voters. Uh, the engineering report will be published once, probably in the next couple of weeks. And a notice of election, which is in a form that's attached to this resolution as an exhibit, will be published four times, uh, starting next month. Uh, and then, as I said, the election will be held November 16th. You'll meet at your council meeting immediately following that election later in November. Um, and if the election passes, then you'll be able to proceed towards the issuance of the bonds and, uh, closing that loan with DEQ.
I want to ask a question, upgrading the system, what's the lifespan of like, as far as if it's 20-year, we're doing a 20-year loan on it and the upgrade to the water system? Y'all do that every 20 years, every 15 years, every 10, like? When was the last time it was upgraded?
I would defer to Webb on that. I mean, your, your program is a sort of an ongoing program of improving the system, but I'll ask Webb to address the useful life of this.
This was originally done, but with the, the high flows, we just need the improvements to, to make it last the next 15, 20 years, I would say 20.
Okay, I was just wondering, you know, we're finding it's 20.
Cause we're increasing it, but, right.
Need another loan to make it last another 10 years. So that, that's what I was just.
When was the, uh, upgrade to the pre-treatment plant? The old?
Yeah, that was.
Well, and that was through a grant.
But still, that was the last upgrade we did. We took the, uh, affluent from the milk plant, Dean Foods out by Winn-Dixie, and also North Oaks Hospital and put them in that pre-treatment plant before we go into our sewer system. That in turn, not quite sure if that was the, the solution or aerators that we put into the pond as well, which was done, uh, about five years ago, uh, which kinda stopped the, the smell for the most part on Fagan that we were getting continuous complaints on. So I guess, I don't think you're ever out of the woods totally, but you're always working on, uh, these types of sewer plants over years.
And overall, I think probably the biggest improvement from this is twofold. One is to increase the capacity. I mean, it's, that's a huge improvement to the system as a whole to allow us for future growth and, and to meet current growth. Um, and then to ensure that we're under compliance, not just right now, but also with the future permit that's coming down that will most likely have ammonia limits based on what we have seen given out to other municipalities and parish systems. So this is a much-needed, necessary project. This is not a, a what-if project. This is a project that is so necessary that we would have to talk about other funding sources should something happen with the election. This is a critical improvement to Hammond's system.
I just wanted to make sure that the upgrade was not a upgrade that would be only for five or 10 years. that would be only for five or 10 years. Obviously, you're doing upgrades on water throughout the course of development and growth. But I just wanted to make sure that we were doing enough to upgrade it as far as if we're loaning money for 20 years. That, you know, five years from now, we wouldn't be getting another loan to do an upgraded system and continue that way.
Yeah. The last major upgrade that the mayor just referred to was a $1.2 million upgrade. That was all funded through grant money.
Okay.
So there are other times with upgrades that will be needed that we have used grants. In fact, part of what we're doing right now in District 3 is another $675,000 CDBG grant. So we, again, this is something that the whole sewer system for the entire city is an ongoing upgrade project.
I'm aware of that.
Yeah. And it's a sewer system. Just to make sure that we're all clear, we're not working on the -- it's sewer treatment plant.
So, ask you a question. Why are you standing up there? So if you're still planning on what's Plan B? If the people don't vote on it?
If the people don't vote on it, we would have to come back and talk to the council about changing out the priority of capital improvement projects within each district and potentially dedicating $2.1 million of capital improvements money just to this one project. We would foreseeably have one capital improvement project for next year rather than multiples in all the sidewalks and the streets and the drainage and the sewer projects that we're now considering.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions from the?
I got one question.
Sure.
I'm listening to you talk about the $2.1 million. And you talk about the projects. Is that collectively the entire city? Or is that basically those that are in immediate repair or upgraded right now? Because you've got some systems that are working fine.
Sure.
And you've got some of them that are like critical, like you're talking about Fagan. Fagan Drive, I've been living in that area all my life. That smell's still there, so.
Actually, the smell has been decreased.
I mean, some, some.
In huge, huge ways.
You know, there it is there. So that's critically saying.
Right.
Are you talking about the entire city? Or are you talking about just a select immediate area that's already in the airflow system?
Right.
That's already been improved and upgraded. So am I going back to that same system and upgrading it a little better where it doesn't give us a problem in the next 10, 20 years along with this grant? That's what you're saying, right?
Yes, sir. So the sewer treatment plant will actually benefit everyone in Hammond. All of the sewer goes to that one location. So this is an improvement to that one location that will be for the benefit of all citizens.
Any other questions? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Final adoption of ordinance, none. Introduction except for hearing, none. Need a motion to adjourn. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.